Saw that number skyrocket to 34,000. A one-year increase of more than 20%.
One of the questions that came out in, you know, the folks were asking is sort of where are these folks coming from? And I think there's a tendency to think that like this is an imported problem. This is not an imported problem. This is a Los Angeles problem.
Krikorian is putting solutions to work in his own district. He hosts Homeless Connect Days, events where homeless people find all services in one place. Housing referrals, food, showers, medical care, even DMV ID cards. A new supportive housing complex, a pilot program that links job training and housing, and a center that provides storage for people on the street are also part of this area's game plan. Moultrie Potter, who was once homeless, got help from a Valley program, and he's now ready to follow his culinary dreams.
I want to open up a food truck. My future is bright now. I have so many resources. My mental health is great.
And in this room, it's clear that LA residents themselves are ready to help find solutions to LA's homeless challenges. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Other agencies that took part in the town hall included the LAPD, the City Sanitation Department, and the LA County Homeless Initiative. While women, and yes, men too, hit the streets in droves to support equal rights, equal pay, and zero harassment in the workplace. LA's second annual Women's March was even bigger than last year's, and as Gil Reyes reports, the stars also came out to support.
Every single day, your job as an American citizen is not just to fight for your rights. It's to fight for the right of every individual that is taking a breath.
Academy Award winner Viola Davis speaks to the hundreds of thousands gathered at downtown Civic Center, the culmination of LA's Women's March. The nearly one-mile procession from Pershing Square to Grand Park was one of several Women's marches throughout the country.
I'm here to support women's rights and women's equality in the workplace, equal pay for women, and Planned Parenthood for sure.
Another cause highlighted this day: the Me Too movement, taking a stand against sexual assault and harassment in the workplace. From movie mogul Harvey Weinstein to TV host Matt Lauer, allegations of misconduct have destroyed the careers of once-powerful men in the media and in entertainment.
Men say that our movement makes them feel uncomfortable and paranoid. And to that I say, this movement is not about catering our voices to accommodate your comfort.
Maybe men can say and do whatever they want, but women cannot. The current system inhibits women from expressing our desires, wants, and needs.
Also everywhere were signs to dump Trump, himself accused of misbehavior by several women. Organizers had planned the marches as a get-out-and-vote campaign for the upcoming midterm elections. Democrats have a shot at flipping Congress in November. Other issues, including immigration policy, hang in the balance.
And some might not like it, but look around you. Los Angeles is the face of the world today. And sorry, Mr. President, we're the face of this country tomorrow.
Reporting from downtown Civic Center, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Police reported no arrests and no major problems. Well, it's a water reclamation project that could change the way LA does water. The NoHo West remediation project will be the first of several to help generate more water for LA and lessen its dependence on imported water. Anna Marcos has more.
It's the state's second-largest underground water reservoir, but for decades, the water in the San Fernando Basin had been off-limits to a dry and thirsty LA, until now. The city's NoHo West remediation project, now under construction, is about to change that by cleaning up the contamination left by industries during World War II.
The industries have brought us these great middle-class jobs, and that brought us the technological advances that we enjoy today, also left us with contaminated groundwater that has tainted our water supply for decades.
We are actually taking water that has been contaminated for a half a century and bringing it up to drinking water standards.
Right now, about 70% of all the water wells in the San Fernando Basin are contaminated, but this project will bring clean water to more than 35,000 families, and it's just one of several projects on the way.
We'll not just only be able to keep it here, we'll be able to drink it, we'll be able to use it, instead of it being stuck in polluted groundwater basins or washed out to the ocean. And that's a huge reengineering. I like to call it a second Moho-in-moment.
NoHo West, a $92 million project, will be one of four water reclamation projects. It's set to be completed in 2020. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The city of LA plans to spend $600 million on these projects in the next four years. The money comes from a state water bond approved by voters. Well, can eyeglasses really help you learn? Well, educators are counting on it. A joint program by the LA Clippers Foundation, LAUSD, and the group Vision to Learn is giving out lots of free eyewear to LAUSD students. Anna Marcos has more.
Even Chuck, the LA Clippers mascot, is making a pitch for the four-eyed look, and the kids at this free eyeglass fitting at Fornoy Elementary are getting the idea: glasses are cool.
At first, when I got my glasses, I was like, I was like very confused, but at the same time nervous, because I didn't know that I needed glasses. And then when I put them on, I looked out, I looked outside. I was very excited, but at the same time, mind-blown. I was like, whoa, everything looks so different.
In fact, 200 students at this school, a whopping 30%, reportedly failed their eye exams. The story is similar throughout LAUSD, where 20% of students need glasses. And officials say many of their parents can't afford eyeglasses or exams.
In my class, it's hard for me to read the board. It makes me feel embarrassed, and then I have to walk up to the board to see it.
That's where this free eyeglass fitting comes in. The joint effort between the LA Clippers Foundation, LAUSD, and the nonprofit group Vision to Learn will bring free eye exams and eyeglasses to thousands of LA schoolchildren over the next two years.
But after today, I may have to go get some glasses, just so I can be as cool as all you will be when you got your glasses today.
And this is something that is very, very important. And when you hear the facts and you hear the amount of kids that this will affect and impact positively, it's kind of a no-brainer.
According to educators, 80% of children's learning throughout grade school is visual, so eyeglasses are more than just visual aids. They're a critical learning tool.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you all for modeling, modeling how we get to 100% graduation. Help the kids see, let's make sure who needs glasses gets glasses.
Because just like eyeglasses are cool, so is a successful high school-graduated egghead. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The Vision Program will benefit LAUSD students from K through 12. In the 1980s, singer El DeBarge seemingly had it all, until addictions to painkillers and crack caught up to him. Now drug-free, the artist performed a show for others facing similar demons. Gil Reyes has more.
Three-time Grammy nominee El DeBarge entertained the crowd at Skid Row's Midnight Mission during this free, very personal concert. Patricia Bagley has every reason to dance.
I thank God for the Midnight Mission. Ever since I'll have 10 years clean and sober in May, and my whole recovery, I've been coming to meetings at this place.
Bagley has also been a huge fan of El DeBarge and his singing siblings since the mid-1980s, when the group's songs "Rhythm of the Night" and "Who's Holding Donna Now?" topped the charts, making them stars on MTV. But El DeBarge has also struggled with addiction. He spent more than a year in prison on drug charges, has been in and out of rehab, and is now making a serious effort to turn his life around.
So we all have our struggles. I'm not perfect, but I thank God, I'm not what I used to be. And I'm free from crack, believe that.
DeBarge contacted the Midnight Mission about performing the free show for others in recovery and facing homelessness. The mission hosts a music or art show almost every Thursday.
But I'll tell you, the musicians who come in say that this is the best audience they've ever had. And I believe that's true, because the folks here in our community don't take this for granted. They're so appreciative of anybody who's willing to come down and donate their time and talent in this really special way.
Thank you all. Love y'all. Love y'all. Thank you, thank you.
Here's to second chances. On Skid Row, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The Midnight Mission provides crisis and bridge housing for those experiencing homelessness, also a drug and alcohol recovery program. The mission has been helping Angelenos get back on their feet since 1914. Well, they are known to be unique in the ape world, yet we're losing them by the thousands. Rasha Goel has more on how advocates are urging to help save orangutans.
Yana, I'm at the LA Zoo, where a special presentation was held on orangutans. Now, while we're fortunate enough to experience them here at the zoo, well, they do face extinction, and they had some important messages here for the public.
One of the key points I always try to make is, even though they're so much stronger than us, and the males of canine such as like tigers, yeah? And we have killed maybe a million of them over the last few centuries, as a slowly wiping species to extinction. And not one time in recorded history, not any zoo or any sanctuary in the wild, has orangutan ever killed a human being. Yeah? They are far more noble creatures than we are.
Leif Cox, an orangutan conservationist and founder of the Orangutan Project, has spent the last three decades working to save orangutans from extinction. He shared his experiences and emphasized how important it is for humans to care about these animals.
We can't save orangutans unless people care and understand that the persons who share our planet, intelligent as a five, six-year-old child, have been driven to extinction for no good reason. And connecting with people with their stories and having compassion for them is part of the solution to saving them.
Cox says the next few years are pivotal in turning this around to help save viable ecosystems, which will help orangutans survive into the future. There are primarily two species of orangutans, the Bornean and Sumatran. Orangutans are among the most intelligent primates. The LA Zoo is home to seven orangutans from the Bornean species.
People, I think, realize that primates are smart, but I don't know if they've realized to the extent to which orangutans can really problem-solve and how cognitively advanced they are. And then another thing is just how long-lived they are. It's one of the problems facing them conservation-wise, is that they're a really long-lived species, and they don't breed very often. So females only have babies every seven to nine years.
Sadly, both species are considered to be critically endangered at this time.
Their forest home has been destroyed for unsustainable forms of agriculture, such as palm oil, pulp paper, and rubber, which do not benefit the economy or the long-term future of our planet.
It's the reason why getting the message out there has become a priority, and places such as the LA Zoo are pivotal.
The conservation threats that are behind many of these issues that are facing these species, zoos work really hard to not only support some of these initiatives, but also to educate the public on some of the problems that these animals are facing.
As we continue to learn from each other, hopes are to conserve a future where people live in harmony with nature. From the LA Zoo, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
City leaders celebrate the official grand opening of a new resource center. A free citizenship workshop offers help and advice for those seeking legal permanent status. And the LA Zoo welcomes an adorable new addition to the family. All these stories in City Beat. Councilmember Kern Price and county supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas were on hand for the official grand opening of the HOPIC's Family Solution Center in South LA. The center brings together more than 10 nonprofit and government agencies and acts as a hub for a comprehensive range of services, including housing, jobs, and mental health and substance abuse treatments. Thanks to Measure H, the center has already helped thousands of families stay off the streets. The HOPIC's Family Solution Center has been operating at this location since July and has helped more than 3,000 families so far.
They come in, if they have nowhere to go, we place them in housing, and then we enroll them into our housing intervention. So where we actually find a place for them to live, negotiate with landlords, negotiate rent, and actually pay rent or portions of rent for up to 12 months, and then help them stay in housing.
Councilman Kern Price, in partnership with Resource Center Cat Asen, also hosted a free citizenship and temporary protective status workshop at Manuel Arts High School. During the workshops, individuals obtained one-on-one advice on how to protect themselves and possibly gain legal permanent status. Temporary protected status is granted to countries facing devastating environmental disasters, civil war, or political instability. The humanitarian program protects individuals from deportation and allows them to live and work legally in the U.S. Councilmember Price has been a strong advocate and supporter of all immigrant rights.
Every time I hear him speak, he talks about such a strong community, and that how separating people from the family really does affect the community as a whole. So we really appreciate his efforts and all of the support that he lends to the immigration community.
Another TPS workshop is being held on February 24th at the El Santo Nino Community Center at 601 East 23rd Street from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. To make an appointment, call 213-814-5248. The Los Angeles Zoo announced the birth of its first-ever female Okapi calf born at the zoo, a unique species often nicknamed the Forest Giraffe. The calf was born on November 10th, 2017, and is the second offspring for 14-year-old mother Opie and the first for 3-year-old father Jackson. The couple was paired together as part of an association of zoos and aquarium species survival plan program with the goal of increasing the Okapi population, which is rapidly declining in the wild. The currently unnamed calf spent the first couple of months behind the scenes bonding with her mother and familiarizing herself with her new home and the animal care staff. But guests can now view the female calf and her mother out in their habitat daily. Well, there's nothing like combining art and travel, and it's a perfect blend at Union Station. Rasha Goel has more.
With the vast array of diversity and cultural groups in the city, it's no surprise to be experiencing some tradition at Union Station. After all, why not enjoy some culture as you navigate through the City of Angels? And for these performers, who are from a village in Belize called Huana Aragua, they say it's a way to keep their culture alive for those who are unable to go back home during the holiday season.
Besides being spiritual, it's a war dance. And that's one of the reasons you see the mask, you see the sword. If you look at the black... Today, we wear in black and white because it's the way we show that we mourn the past year, welcoming the new year.
This is just one of the many events Metro Art has put on. Through the program, they present music, dance, poetry readings, and film screenings at Union Station.
Metro Art has been adding artistic and cultural events to Union Station for going on five years now, and it's part of a larger effort to make Union Station a cultural destination.
It's very important to transfer cultural practices and traditions to the next generation, because if I don't do it, I always tell myself, wait, who's gonna do it?
And it's a way to promote the visual arts while promoting ridership and connecting people throughout the city. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
For a list of other Metro Arts events, visit metro.net. Well, check out a collection of some of the biggest failures by some of the world's best-known companies. It's time for a tea party with the fairies, and Porsche fans, a new exhibit rolls into town that you won't want to miss. All this in this week's Things to Do. The Museum of Failure will treat its visitors to a shrine of history's epic fails by some of the world's best-known companies. First displayed in Sweden, the collection of 100-plus failures was originally conceived by psychologist and innovation researcher Dr. Samuel West as part of his research on corporate success and innovation. The marketing catastrophe that was big for her, yep. The two-wheeled self-balancing transport innovation segue, you better believe it. These, along with artifacts spanning from the 17th century right up to the present day, including the frozen beef lasagna by Colgate, demonstrate the types of failures the museum will showcase. Other highlights include the hula chair, the Apple Newton, and even President Donald Trump's version of Monopoly from 1989 made the cut. You won't want to miss the Museum of Failure on February 4th, located at A&amp;D Architecture and Design Museum at 900 East 4th Street. A fairy tea party, such a lovely event. Each table will be hosted by one of a fairy hunt's charming fairies. English tea sandwiches, shortbread cookies, fairy fruit and veggies, and fairy tea will be served, catered by a fairy caterer. Come dressed in your fairy, prince, or princess finest attire. Circle time, story time with the fairies, music, dancing, and surprises are all part of the fun. A Fairy Hunt's Fairy Tea Party takes place February 3rd from 11:30 a.m. to 12:45 p.m. at the Tarzana Community and Cultural Center, located at 19130 Ventura Boulevard. For more, visit afairyhunt.com. Celebrating the worldwide impact of Porsche's legendary machines, the Peterson Automotive Museum presents the Porsche Effect. The new exhibit, organized in partnership with Porsche Cars North America and staged in the Mullen Grand Salon, will represent the most comprehensive Porsche display outside of Stuttgart. Museum guests will have a chance to see 50 of the brand's most iconic cars, both in the exhibition and in an all-new Porsche dedicated vault tour in the museum's underground treasury. The exhibit opens to the public on February 3rd at the Peterson Museum. For more, visit Peterson.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
I repave streets across the city of Los Angeles.
I make the city beautiful by picking up tons of trash every day.
I tested our water to keep our oceans clean.
I make TV shows that air on LA City View 35.
We oversee 56 pools, two lakes, and one city beach, and we keep them safe for the public.
I'm connecting communities by building bridges, literally.
We manage over 400 parks in the city of Los Angeles for all families to come and enjoy. I'm part of a team that keeps the ports safe and clean.
I launched a website to 4 million Angelenos.
I developed a training program used by over 40,000 employees.[1323.33]
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 30th. I want to welcome you to City Hall, your City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is invited. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscagino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Weston. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves. Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves. Bloomingfield seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? We'll be led in our flag salute by Mr. Harris Dawson this morning.
All right, everybody, put your right hands over your heart and begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Madam Clerk, if you'd please continue.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed, Items 1L, O, and R, as the liens have been paid in full, and then Items 1S and J, as the liens have been paid and the remaining balance rescinded.
So ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 11 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on any of these items?
There are cards on Items 1 and 5.
Okay, let's hold those two items and vote on the remaining items. If you'd please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, for the record, those awards will be carried over one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you very much.
And also, for the record, on Item 11, the public hearing is closed and a public announcement of the ballot tabulation results will be made tomorrow, Wednesday, January 31st.
Thank you. Okay, if we could move on to the next set of items?
Items 12 through 26 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Members, any specials? Mr. Rue? 18 for Mr. Rue. Mr. Buscagino?
25.
25 for Mr. Buscagino. Let us prepare to...
And, Mr. President, there is a request also for my member to hold 26.
Let's hold 26 as well and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 27 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. O'Farrell.
Item 27 special, please.
Okay, Item 27. Let's hold that for Mr. O'Farrell.
And there are cards on all three items.
Okay, then continue.
Item 30 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yeah, let's hold it for a bit anyway, and continue.
And then, Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue for presentation.
Good morning, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor today to be joined by some very special guests, all 50 of them. Altogether, they are the D3 football champions for the city of Los Angeles, the Marshall High School Barristers. This past season, the team behind me worked hard, worked smart, and most importantly, they worked together. And with the leadership of their head coach, Johnston, Coach Holland, and Coach Razzo, and with the support of their school, they had a victorious season, beating Verdugo Hills, Councilmember Rodriguez, 61 to 26 in the city championship game.
Is that talking smack, Mr. Rue?
This, you know, I have to take this opportunity, Mr. President, because this is their first championship win since 1982. And we are going to flaunt it all year long, and we are incredibly proud of their efforts and honor their hard work, as well as the unseen work of their parents and teachers that made this win possible. Their achievement is the first of many, because Marshall High is not just about winning athletics, but it's its rigorous education, and it's its dynamic extracurricular opportunities, and it's a strong support system of teachers, parents, administrators, coaches, and classmates that sets students on a path of success. The team you see behind me knows the power of sacrifice, determination, and of working together. And their hard work as a team is a lesson that they will carry with them through the many challenges of life, and that will lead them to many, many more wins. And on behalf of Council District 4, we are very proud of your win this season and look forward to your future success. Let's give them another round of applause. And now, I'd like to invite the principal of Marshall High, Dr. Gary Garcia.
Mr. President and council members, thank you for honoring our students today. I'd like to point out that our coach, Coach Johnston, is the Division III Coach of the Year for L.A. Unified. I am very proud of our students, our parents, our student managers, and our cheerleaders in the back. They are the best cheerleaders in the city, and I...
Let's give the cheerleaders a round of applause, even though they're blocked out all the way in the back.
And I am most proud of the fact that our football team has a 3.0 team GPA this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Principal Dr. Garcia. Oh, great, I was going to ask the camera. Cheerleaders, you guys want to stand up?
They are standing.
Oh, they are standing, okay. Oh, they are standing, okay. Well, you know, next, I'd like to introduce the Coach of the Year, the Coach of the Barristers, Coach Clay Johnston.
First of all, I'd like to thank the city and all the council members, especially Councilmember you for inviting us. It's an incredible honor, being honored by the city that you grew up and you were raised in, and they're extremely proud of. I can't say enough about the team behind me. They've done everything you would ask a team to do, and so far and so forth. I would also like to thank Marshall High School. I'd like to thank Dr. Garcia, our principal, the cheerleaders, and all of the staff and all the alumni. I appreciate everything, and thank you, Los Angeles.
Thank you, colleagues, and you know, like I said, we are going to gloat all year long on this win, and we're going to come back again next year, because many of the players behind me are not graduating. They're all sophomores and juniors. So we expect them to win again next year and do this presentation again next year for their second win. But on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to present a certificate of commendation to the John Marshall High School Football Team 2017-2018.
Hey, you know what, David? Why don't we, if it's okay with you, if we could make a little line on the side, let the cheerleaders come up, get in front of the Diaz, so that they can be in front of the, be in the photograph. They do a lot of training, and they work hard, and they cheer on all of the teams, and they should bask in some of this glory.
Great idea. Thank you, Mr. President.
Maybe you guys could take a knee or something, or, anyway, I'll leave that up to you, Sherry. Let's give them one more round of applause.
Thank you.
So as they are exiting to my right, I'd like to recognize Mr. Englander. I believe you have the next presentation.
Colleagues, I have the, I don't have to ask for cheerleaders, because I already have them in uniform, the best cheerleaders for the city of Los Angeles, and this is really cool.
And some good-looking uniforms as well.
That's right, great-looking uniforms. This is great, because as you know, right now, we are at the height of the award seasons here in Hollywood. And we have our own awards here in California, and it is an honor that LAPD Operations ABC received the California Department of ABC's Director Award for Outstanding Performance in 2018. Let's give them a round of applause. In fact, our California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control Team, the Director, Jacob Applesmith, Deputy Chief Kathy Barnes, and LAPD Assistant Chief Bee Gramala are all here, and today, we honor a dedicated team, upholding public service, addressing alcohol-related issues, teaching programs to classes that benefit our community, and continually going above and beyond the call of duty. In fact, the Los Angeles Police Department's Operation ABC Unit, they received the Director's Award for Outstanding Performance, the highest award from the California Department of ABC, based on overall accomplishments. Now, this is very competitive with all of the agencies throughout the state of California, and in fact, they have categories they have to score for in each category up to 100%. LAPD ABC Operations actually scored above the 100% tile. It started in 1995, and they were instrumental in regulating and managing over 6,000 ABC licenses within 21 geographic areas throughout the city of Los Angeles. The grant outlined more than 20 statistical performance goals, and they achieved every single one of them. So I want to thank the gap program, LAPD Operations. They made over 385 arrests. Now, by the way, it's 385 arrests of people that would have either been impaired, that were breaking the rules and laws, that certainly putting others in danger, that ultimately saved lives, and protected all of us. They conducted 139 different operations, and you can imagine what goes into each and every one of these. They're methodical, they're thought out, they're planned, and they're implemented. They have a minor decoy, a shoulder tap, task force, and inspections. They taught 6,000 students all about being safe, and they held over 165 standardized training for alcohol retailers. The unit gave over 400 officers ABC roll call training in addition to earning this award. So I want to congratulate the LAPD Operations ABC Unit, Sergeant 2 Lee Garcia in charge, and Sergeant 2 Greg Knoller, excuse me, and Reserve Officer Steve Moore. Reserve Officer Steve Moore was a former officer in charge, retired from active duty in 2014, and continues to give back to the city. So on receiving the Director's Award for Outstanding Performance, we have a special presentation and a certificate signed by all of us congratulating the Los Angeles Police Department ABC Operations for winning this outstanding achievement for 2018. Let's give them a round of applause. But wait, there's more. I'd like to now introduce the Department of ABC Director, Jacob Applesmith, to say a few words.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, President Weston. Mr. Englander, really appreciate it. It's a fantastic program. LAPD has been a wonderful partner with us. Lots of achievements we could cite, but let me just give you one. They ran 70 minor decoy operations last year, and they reduced the rate of success of kids purchasing alcohol from 28% to 13% in those, and that's really a function of how much attention they brought to the issue, how much their training paid off, just generally how they were able to let licensees know that someone was paying attention. That is a true achievement for all of us trying to keep alcohol away from kids. So we just really want to thank all of you for your partnership. Your officers have really done a great job. It's been, just been a fantastic partnership for us, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Now, in fact, Mr. President, I told them for 2019 that you always wanted to do a ride along with ABC, and as part of their minor decoy program, that you would go undercover as a minor in the attempt to purchase from one of these facilities. And so, since our height was the same, I might join you in that effort as well, so we'll do a special decoy program.
I look forward to it. I want to get carded.
That's right, that's right. You'll get carded. With that, we actually have a surprise category in this year as well, and so we have a surprise gift and award to an agent for the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control that has dedicated 10 years, decade of service, and our surprise certificate this year goes to Benjamin De La Rosa. So Benjamin, congratulations. Really appreciate it. And here to present that award is our LAPD Assistant Chief Bee Gramala. Come on up.
Chief, always a pleasure.
The pleasure is mine and the privilege to be here. Good morning. I got buzzed out. Okay, I'll start again. I know the feeling. I will keep my remarks brief. First of all, to Ben De La Rosa, thank you so much for that 10-year partnership, getting us the resources and the ability for us to do the work in all 21 geographic areas that you have been. Again, a pleasure to have our folks working with you. To Lee Fernando Garcia, Craig Knoller, and Reserve Officer Steve Moore, who cannot be here today, looking at the breadth and the depth of the work and the public safety component to impact impaired drivers, impaired people out there on the streets at night who are enjoying the multifaceted entertainment districts that this city provides, making sure they get from point A to point B safely. This is what we talk about, the mighty three, Lee Fernando, Craig, and Steve, working with ABC to make that happen. So I just want to say, on behalf of the Chief of Police and the entire Office of Operations that has worked with Operation ABC, we are privileged to stand here with you, and we congratulate you wholeheartedly for keeping this community safe. Thank you. And to Director Applesmith, thank you for taking that trip from Sacramento to be here. We're honored with your presence.
And here is your award, by the way, so...
Well, let's give it to them.
Let's give our chief a round of applause.
Let's give it to them who deserve it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, on the way out, you'll have a breathalyzer, so thank you for this today.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. And Madam Clerk, we do have more than 12 members, so why don't we reconsider the awards and vote on them again?
And for the record, those are Items 2 through 4 and 6 through 10.
Okay, so the first vote will be on reconsideration. So Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Now, members, let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
We want to go out of sequence. Mr. O'Farrell? Oh, gosh, I believe it's Item 27? Mr. O'Farrell, oh gosh, I believe it's item 27. Okay, so on this item, let me get Mr. Walsh, Previn, McAllister, and Peirman. And Mr. O'Farrell, you do have members of the family that are with us today. So I called your name. If you'd please come forward on public comment, please come forward.
I had multiple public comments.
I understand. We're doing this, you're going to get your one minute for this, and then we'll go back into the others.
Okay, fine. I just want you to know, this is a city where the, where the Chief of Police just drops out. He just kicks out.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh.
Well, this is the subject, the Chief of Police.
No, it's not, and you know that. So come on.
But HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. And as far as the city is concerned, where the hell is the mayor?
Okay, Mr. Walsh. Okay, Ms. Peirman? This is on item 27.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think you're going to be able to do, get any response to find the person responsible for the death of Juan Carlos Luna. I have a feeling that you're not going to be able to get it because probably people are scared to be able to put their life on the line and have themselves killed or have their families killed. Basically, we're in a lawless area where, especially with all the illegal criminals, we won't be able to do anything. So basically, what we got here is we got to be able to defend ourselves. And hey, we got the right to have, to have the right to carry.
Okay, thank you. You're off topic.
So anyway.
Mr. Previn, you're off topic, Ms. Peirman. Ms. Peirman, come on. Yes, Mr. Previn?
Yes, it's Eric Previn from Studio City. This is a tragedy. A 21-year-old Latino man was fatally stabbed on September 16th on the 1800 block of West Court Street in Westlake, according to the county coroner's records. At about 8:00 AM, a pedestrian found Mr. Luna unresponsive on the sidewalk. He was pronounced dead shortly thereafter. It's unknown why he was in the area. He did not live nearby there. The police think that he was alone when he was stabbed. This is a terrible tragedy. He was not a documented gang member, and the police are continuing to investigate a motive for the stabbing. And you could reach out to the Rampart Division at 323-484-3650. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mc, or, we have a McAllister? Oh, P. Yes, Ms. McAllister.
What am I on, 27?
No, yes. Just, you get one minute on this one.
Number 27. The sanctuary city, Los Angeles. This young man was killed, and it sounds like he's probably an illegal alien, Juan Carlos Luna.
You know, his family is here. You might want to show some sensitivity.
And, excuse me, can I finish? I think that more killings will be happening if you continue to give non-citizens affordable housing and the jobs. I think that we need to stop allowing illegals to live in affordable housing.
You're not on the subject, Ms. McAllister.
And I think that this young man's.
Thank you. Your time is up. You deviated from the, you deviated from the topic. You're off sub, you want to be removed, Ms. McAllister? Then speak again, and you'll be removed. Your time is done. Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is now yours. No, Ms. McAllister, last warning. Okay, no, now she can leave. She can, okay, then, then you can, Ms. McAllister, the sergeants, I want to remove. Yep, well, then we'll have to do what we have to do, okay? You have been warned. You are disrupting, you were disrupting then, you are disrupting this meeting now, and we are asking you to please leave. Mr. City Attorney, she is constantly disrupting.
She is. She went off topic. You very clearly warned her. She got back off topic, and her time was caught, cut, and now she's refusing to stop and disrupting the business of the city council.
No, you are off topic. You are off topic, and you're still disrupting this meeting. I want her removed.
And she's still shouting from the meeting.
Has absolutely nothing to do. You are off topic. You were warned. You are off topic, Ms. McAllister. You were warned. You are continuing to disrupt this meeting, and we are asking that you please leave these proceedings because you have disrupted us for the last five minutes. Please, no, ma'am, whoever you are, let's keep it down. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just because sometimes the microphones don't pick these things up, for the sake of the record, as the city attorney was explaining the disruption that was going on, I couldn't hear him because of the shouting that was coming out from the audience. I could not hear what the city attorney was saying. So if there's any better example of how disruptive this behavior is, he's 20 feet away from me, and I could not, speaking into a microphone, and I couldn't hear what he was saying.
Well, Ms. McAllister, you were warned to stay on subject. You continued to deviate from the subject, and you're disrupting this meeting. Mr. O'Farrell?
Mr. President, even though she continues to disrupt the meeting and proceedings and exhibit incredible insensitivity to something that is so important, I would like to move forward with this so as not to keep the family waiting. And she can sit there and violate your instructions continually, and then it's going to become a wholly, an entirely different situation for her legally if she chooses to stay. But I'd like to move forward with this.
I'd like, I'd like for you to just wait, just for, for one moment, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have with me a family that has endured an incredible hardship through the tragedy of the loss of one of their own. And this loss happened sometime between September 16th and September 17th of last year. I have with me Alberto Luna, the brother of Juan Carlos Luna, and the parents of Juan Carlos Luna, Vicente Luna and Monica Torres. As I mentioned, on the morning of Sunday, September 17th, Mr. Juan Carlos Luna was found deceased. He'd been stabbed to death, found at the corner of Court Street and Burlington Avenue in the historic Filipino town neighborhood of the 13th District. Mr. Luna's murder and the loss to his family is tragic and sad beyond comprehension. This grave injustice to this man, only 20 years old, taken, who will never get to experience all of the wonders of life that everyone else has the privilege to. And we're joined again by his family and loved ones. We are demanding help from the public in bringing those responsible for his death to justice. With this reward offer, we hope to compel members of the public to step up and assist our partners at Los Angeles Police Department with this investigation. We have Detective Ray Martinez from Rampart, who is on the case, and we urge your support in approving this reward offer. And the family has graciously and courageously agreed to answer some questions to the media in back so that can elevate the profile, so that we can bring to justice those who would commit such atrocious crimes against all of society when one of our own is taken way too young. This is something that we cannot stand for, and I urge a unanimous aye vote so that we can get this motion and the reward money in process, and we can bring those responsible to justice promptly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. And to the family, we are so sorry for your loss. This is one of the most difficult things that we do on this council. We hate when it's necessary for us to do that. Mr. Kocorian, so back to you. So we will do everything we can. You've got a councilman that is determined to try to get any clues that can lead to the apprehension and conviction. And know that our prayers are with your family. We are so, words can't describe how sorry we are. We are so sorry. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Kocorian, item 30.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item 30 is a settlement of a matter that budget and finance has considered and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation. That approval, or that vote can be taken in open session unless members have questions or concerns about the matter.
Okay. Let's, on this item, open the roll.
And for the record, on item 30, in the matter relative to significant exposure to litigation from the State Water Control Resources Board and the Regional Water Quality Control Board against the city for discharge from the Hyperion Treatment Plant in September 2015, there is a recommendation to expend up to $2,262,249 in settlement.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
And just for the record, I'll note that half of the amount actually is out, will be allocated to supplemental environmental projects by the city, subject to the approval of the water boards.
Thank you. Let's go to the multi-comment section. So we'll start off with Mr. Walsh.
And Mr. President, as the speaker makes his way forward, there are requests to continue items 1F, M, N, and Q for 30 days to February 28th.
Okay, so without objection. So Mr. Walsh has, what, two minutes, and then his general comment, general public comment? He's got items 1A through C, 28, and then general public comment, Mr. Walsh, and then Mr. Previn, he'll be on deck.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Building and safety, you do a pretty good job on building and safety. I'd like to just go right into my general public comment. I don't stretch these times out, you know, HollywoodHighlands.org. And as I said, the city has no Chief of Police. If you're a tourist, when you come here, there's no Chief of Police. He just kicked his, he just scooted his ass out of here. The mayor, where is he? God only knows where the mayor is and where his wife is.
Let's get on the subject.
The subject is the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. You don't want me to talk about his being a foof. He's gay, he's 100% gay, and everybody knows it, and his lover is Glenn Dake, and he's got a wife and a husband and several children.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Previn? Okay, where's, what does Mr. Previn have here? 1D, 5, 28, 29, and general public comment? You've got two minutes and then one moment, one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from CD2. I live in Studio City. Item 28 is the city clerk's office is going to be commandeering briefly the tower for a meeting, and it's appropriate, I assume. There's no GSD coverage here. They'll just get a chance to close it off and hold a meeting. And I'm assuming it's to review the kiosk system and how it's been working. One of the problems has been that you cannot add your email address to it, which would be a way for other members of the public to communicate with one another. I've, of course, brought this to the attention of the clerk, but the clerk, under the leadership of a guy named Brian Walters, is very belligerent towards members of the public who are trying to improve city hall content down here. We like to have people on point, talking about stuff that interests them. And that is not to get involved in your ongoing battle with members of the public about what constitutes on the subject.
And it seems we're off topic of the issue of the city hall Bradley tar been used.
For example, the city clerk can meet, well, the city clerk runs this meeting, Mr. Fable, and it is the LAPD who deflect comments to the city clerk who are meeting up in the tower. So I do, once again, I've connected the dots appropriately, and it's not appropriate for you to be fussily intervening, in my view, in my view. Maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Previn, item 28, you have veered off, I'm just asking politely that you veer back.
I'm talking about the city clerk's meeting. You don't post the agenda for that meeting because it's a little meeting, and it's a meeting that I assume is going to be about the kiosk and the way that's working down here. It's working better than it was where you and Mr. Englander were losing cards within 10 feet. Okay, fine, sir.
Mr. Previn, go on to another item.
All right, I'll talk about 29, because I know you like special events. We all do. And Weezer, to his credit, is celebrating a night on Broadway, and I, we are all imagining how much fun that's going to be, and the ABC Award concur. Hopefully, nobody gets killed driving away from the event, but we're looking forward to a celebration. I love celebrations myself. The Taste of Soul is the biggest street vendor celebration in Los Angeles. He gets, Mr. Bakewell, and you know, a lot of money from the county, the city, the metro.
And again, the agenda item is Night on Broadway, not Taste of Soul.
We're modifying the citywide event list, okay?
Okay, now you're on your general public comment, Mr. Previn.
Fair enough, sir. Fair enough. General public comment's going to be about a couple of items that always get my attention, the conflict, attorney-conflict panel, and the sequoque panel. Now, they're not on the agenda today. Oh, I guess the attorney-conflict panel might be, but that's fine. Here's the thing, putting attorneys on cases for the city often makes sense. Not always, but sometimes. But we don't have a good visibility about when that's happening. For example, the case of Peter Goedfroy, they did not hire outside counsel to defend against Brian Panish. Now, Brian Panish is a world-class killer lawyer. He does a great job. He always wins. We didn't hire outside counsel there, and poor Cotty had to defend, and she got killed to the tune of $6.5 million. That was not good. Now, in many other cases, for example, when developers sue the city, we don't hire. But where a community group sues the city, the sequoque panel is invoked, Burke William Sorensen comes to the defense of Richard Weintraub at Sportsman's Lodge, where the community is complaining about. So we've got it all backwards. We have to get it straightened out. The only way to do that is with transparency and visibility about these legal fights. So I would ask you, going forward, to bring that information.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. If we could have Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman, you have items 28 and 29, two minutes, and then you have one minute for general public comment.
I guess I'll skip 28, and I want to do the talk about the one, the Weezer. Apparently, it makes me upset that they spend a lot of money always in areas downtown, big huge areas, big events, but you never really see a huge big event in the San Fernando Valley. It's just another way to show you that they can care less about the San Fernando Valley. And that's all I want to say on that one. So now we'll go to public comment.
Can we give her her one minute for general public comment, please? Go ahead.
McAllister, she may have been disruptive, but she has a point on illegal immigration, which she should have brought up on public comment. This is ruining Los Angeles, having a sanctuary city in Los Angeles. Garcetti is ruining Los Angeles. It should be America first, American citizens first, American blacks first, be able to have the jobs, American Cajuns first, American Hispanics. have the jobs, American Cajuns first, American Hispanics first. We have to stop just giving it—everything away to DACA, illegal immigrations, criminal illegals, Dakas. This is should be—if they go through that and become American citizens, then they're naturalized, then they can have it. And they've got to come in incorrectly. Well, I'm tired of this sanctuary state. I'm tired of this sanctuary city, and I'm tired of this possibly sanctuary country. America first! America first! America first!
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, why don't we vote on items five, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine? On those items, let's open the roll, close it, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you. Now for general public comment. Phyllis, if you come forward. Phyllis Doherty.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Phyllis Doherty with Animal Issues Movement. I want to advise you and warn you about the omnibus animal bills that are coming to you that appear to have one purpose, and they have another. You may have read in the—on City Watch today that the first retail pet store, the people have been convicted of animal abuse, and now they have violated the orders of the court and may go to jail. If the highway patrol wanted to change the laws of the freeway limits in the city, they wouldn't come to you and say they want to move the off-ramps, and you approve it. What you have been asked to do today, and you approved, is the removal of all dog limits in this city. You need to know that, under the guise of redefining kennels. This has become a complete—excuse me? This has become a complete guise to cover up things that you are not aware of. We ask you to please be careful. This is public safety. You're responsible for the animals, the people, and the children out there.
Thank you.
And you just endangered them.
Thank you. So let's close multi- and general public comment at this time. We're going to take up item one B. Do I have a Leslie Moore here? Leslie Moore? Leslie, are you here?
Yes, Your Honor.
Come forward.
How are you, Your Honor?
We're good. Thank you for asking, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you. Should I begin?
Yes, sir.
Sir, this is regarding the posted copy, lien case 486215. And the basic situation is here, is that I'm the victim of real estate fraud, identity theft, and hate crime vandalism by the fraudulent and criminal persons who circulated a fake and fraudulent quitclaim deed to steal my property in July of 2016, GRK Property LLC, Artisan Financial. And the persons listed on that posting, James Rojas, Jessica Aquino, David Stern, and Manny Hernandez. The case is being investigated by Detective Helen Lim of the Real Estate Fraud Unit in Parker Center, which is Police Report 16-1715629. And the damages to my property—
Mr. Moore, let me jump in for a minute. This is what the—this council's prepared to do, and a councilman from your area. We will continue this to—for thirty days to February 28th, and they will get up to speed on the things that you're sharing with us today. And hopefully, by that point in time, we would have sorted this out one way or the other. So your item is continued until February 28th.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I say one more thing, Your Honor?
There's a—you see this person raising their hand? Go share that information with—
All right, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. You're welcome. And I am not a judge, but you are welcome. Mr. Kokorian, you have some concerns or want to make a statement on item one T?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Item one T, the property owner did fall into compliance and has been a—has been doing his best to be in compliance with the orders. I would ask that the lien amount be reduced—the total lien amount be reduced to $356.16. And then we go ahead and move forward with it.
Okay, I second that. If there's a need for a second. Okay, so on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Ms. Martinez, item twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, in recent years, the Los Angeles Fire Department has worked to recruit more women into its ranks. But of all the department's progress, changes to some of its personnel policies haven't kept to pace. When it comes to maternity leave, the women—the department's current policy tends to hinder women rather than help them. A new mother will often take unpaid leave after using up vacation days, sick days, and paid time off. This extra time allows her to bond with her baby during those critical first weeks of birth. As a mother, I can personally attest to that and tell you how sacred and important that time truly is. But for women firefighters, none of that time, except for the first eight days, counts towards seniority and retirement. Current policies also prevent them from buying it back later to get their service credit that they deserve. Consider the consequences. A woman firefighter hired on the same exact day as a male colleague with equal talent and experience may lose her chances of promotion simply because she took the time off to take care of her kids. It isn't fair, and it isn't right. As we strive towards more inclusive workplace with equal rights for all employees, we should reward women employees for their hard work and commitment as well. We should promote our women firefighters who put their lives on the line to keep us safe, not punish them professionally for wanting to have children or take care of them after they are born. So today, we are requesting that the city's Executive Employee Relations Committee take this matter up as part of the meet and confer process with UFLAC so that we can bring our professional policies into the 21st century. I ask for your I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Mr. Rue, you want to deal with item eighteen? You ready, Mr. Rue? Mr. Buscagino, are you ready on your item?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the city prepares itself to host a 2028 Olympics, colleagues, another exciting opportunity has come before us with this item here, item number twenty-five, to potentially host the 2026 FIFA World Cup, right here in our own city. And as Chair of the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee, I want to take a minute to recognize what this could really mean to our city. Soccer is perhaps the world's most beloved sport. In 2014, it's estimated that nearly 3.2 billion viewers tuned into the World Cup final. So to put that into perspective, nearly half of the world's population watched the most recent World Cup final. With over 200 countries with national soccer teams, soccer's a universal language, played, loved, and understood by people of every background and ethnicity. So the spirit of soccer is so fitting for the city of Los Angeles, where everyone is welcome. And Los Angeles is right for this opportunity. With the infrastructure already in place, we're in the works to accommodate millions of visitors. With Los Angeles competing another soccer stadium—completing, rather, another soccer stadium this year, the Los Angeles Football Club, the excitement and energy for the sport will continue to grow for the years leading up to the 2026 World Cup here in Los Angeles. The potential benefits of hosting the World Cup are many and will be felt from the valley to the LA waterfront. The preliminary estimates of the economic spinoff of hosting the 2026 games are very positive, potentially bringing in millions of dollars in direct benefits. And we know for a fact that millions of visitors who will be staying at our hotels will mean transit-oriented occupancy tax dollars for our city. And as you all know, the United States has hosted the FIFA World Cup once, back in 1994. Even then, games brought an estimated $4 billion in economic benefit. So we look forward to the CAO, CLA, the City Attorney, urge—and urge them to come back with forthcoming reports as quickly as possible so we can move this bid along. So let's add this long list of wins for the city of Los Angeles to become one of the host cities for the 2026 World Cup games. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagino. Members, let's prepare to vote on that item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Rue, are you ready at this point? Item eighteen.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you very much. You know, improving park access is a priority for me. And I'm so blessed to have so many great parks in my district, and Runyon Canyon is just one of those parks. And that makes this city a fantastic place to live, offering hiking trails, native wildlife, and beautiful vistas for millions of visitors every year. But while it has seen record popularity, it has also seen—it has not seen any facility improvements, erosion control, or protection of the natural environment in years. And anyone who enjoys Runyon knows that it can take upwards to and sometimes over twenty minutes to find parking. We want to get people out of their cars and into our parks. We want to ensure safety and access for all our visitors. We want to ensure that we're protecting the native habitats, and we want to ensure that we are acting sustainability with things like water reclamation. As a kid in Los Angeles, I grew up playing in city parks, and I know how important these natural escapes can be for our city. We need this report back so our city officials can begin studying the best ways to help our park, to ensure that Runyon Canyon is there for the next generation of hikers and our four-legged friends. So I urge a vote—vote yes vote today, colleagues, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Okay, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, what's before this body, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, and they are referred announcements, members—announcements? Then if all would please—Mr—so if all would please rise, Mr. Englander?
Colleagues, I ask that you join me in this adjourning motion. And it's a little more than an adjourning motion. It's a bit of history, a little bit of a story about a local hero whose picture is up on the screen. A Northridge resident, Lawrence J. Powell, Jr. On December 23rd, 2017, Larry passed away, and our community suffered—our entire country suffered a monumental loss. Lawrence Powell was born on May 17th, 1923, in Chicago, Illinois. He enlisted in the aviation cadet program of the US Army on January 30th, 1943. He was commissioned as a second lieutenant and awarded his pilot wings in Georgia on February—on December 5th of that same year. And then immediately after completing his P-51 Mustang training, Lieutenant Powell was assigned to the 505th Fighter Squadron of the 339th Fighter Group in England in June of 1944. He was credited with the destruction of a total of six enemy aircraft in both aerial combat and while staffing and straffing an enemy airfield. Powell flew 67 and three-quarter missions. 67 and three-quarter missions. He believed he hadn't quite completed his 68 mission because he was shot down on his last mission on January 14th, 1945. On that unfortunate day, he was in the fight of his life. He was a flight commander, and it hit a wire that damaged his plane. He struggled to keep the plane upright and gain enough altitude so he could actually just bail out. He recalled the mission, and it started at 8:00, and it was scheduled to end at 10:00 a.m. After bailing out and landing, he noticed on his watch it said 10:00 a.m., and he thought his plane had finished the mission on time, just in the wrong place, even while parachuting down had a sense of humor. Minutes after the crash, the area was surrounded by Nazis looking for the pilot of the aircraft. Powell evaded enemies for two days before he was captured in Holland on January 16th and was held as a prisoner of war in a camp in Frankfurt. He was then forced marched to the base in Nuremberg, just outside of Hitler's infamous parade grounds seen in all the newsreels we watch today. He recalled the bunks of the POW camp where he ended up, had no mattress. In fact, they were just wooden slats stacked three high to the ceiling. He said it was so cold, they started burning the wood slats and ended up with just a few slats, one for their feet, for their bottom, shoulders, and head. He often recalled the story, how one night, the slats moved just a little bit, and he fell to the bunk below, which in turn crashed through the bunk below, and all three ended up on the floor all night. Finally, on April 29th, Patton's Third Army liberated them. Powell left active duty and joined the California Air National Guard on January 19th, 1947. He served the 195th Fighter Squadron at Van Nuys National Guard Base from January 1947 to February 1955. He then served with the 146th Fighter Bomber Group from February 1955 to September 1958. Lieutenant Colonel Powell served as commander of the 195th Tactical Fighter Squadron from September 1958 to February 1963. He moved on to serve as operations officer for the 146th Tactical Fighter Group at Van Nuys from February 1960, and retired from the Air National Guard on May 1st, 1963. He was hardworking, passionate, was a great man after joining the civil life, and spent a good deal of his life in the production side of the film industry. Recently, he and his two sons, Scott and Robert, went on the road trip this summer to England and Germany, where they were able to see where his father's memories were impacted, changed his life forever, and then met the 13-year-old boy, now 87, that watched Larry crash into his farm. Lawrence J. Powell, Jr., survived by his sons and grandchildren, and he will be missed by all. I had the distinct honor and privilege to shake his hand as he joined, often over at Wings Over Wendy's, was active in sharing his life story. In fact, he was one that was helped create the Living History Program. That is, an individual that's lived through all of that, their entire lives, and then wanted to go on—to go speak to children in junior high and high school and let them know what he had been through personally. He loved sharing his life story with others. He was truly a hero, and we're grateful to call him an Angelino as well. May he rest in peace.
Well done, Mr. Englander. Mr. Buscagino?
Nice tribute, Mitch. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in honor and remembrance of Carol Miranda, who passed away last week, surrounded by her family at the age of 88. Was born in 1929 to a farming family, moved to San Pedro and graduated from San Pedro High School. She met her husband, Daniel Miranda, at her first job, and together they built a life in Wilmington, adding six children to their family over the years. Very active in her Wilmington community. She was a parishioner at St. Peter and Paul Church, was involved in the parent-teacher organization at St. Peter and Paul during her children's school years, and was VFW auxiliary chaplain. She had a real passion for life. She loved to travel to new places with her family, never missed a family or a community event, and brought so much joy to many. She was survived by her husband of 67 years, her children Margie, Danny, Randy, Laura, her five siblings, 10 grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. Donations can be made in Carol's name to Mary Star of the Sea High School. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. So to my left, are there any more adjourning? Now I'm looking to my right, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with a heavy heart that we mourn the passing of Michael Metcalf, and we're graced by some of his— by some of his family members here today. Michael was a truly exceptional person. He cared deeply for the community, especially for his Westwood neighborhood, and we owe him a great deal of gratitude for his commitment and hard work in making Los Angeles a better place. A true gentleman and a scholar, Mike was beloved by his family, deeply respected by his profession and a cherished volunteer in the Westwood community where he lived for more than fifty years. A proud veteran of the U.S. Naval Reserve, he also held the Masters in Architecture and Urban Design from the UCLA Graduate School of Architecture and Urban Planning. Mike was a licensed architect, urban designer and an expert in planning transportation-oriented developments for over thirty years with his own private practice. These skills proved handy as he lent his skills and expertise in many different ways in his volunteer role to preserve and improve the Westwood community. In fact, Mike was involved in almost every single board in Westwood, including the Westwood Homeowners Association, the Westwood Community Council, the Westwood Library Board and most recently, the Westwood Design Review Board, for which I'm especially grateful for the expertise that he provided and his level-headedness on what was otherwise a very difficult board. Mike is survived by his devoted wife, Eloise Lopez Metcalf, who's present here today. They shared a life that was based on a deep love and admiration for each other. He's also survived by his children, Brady Metcalf, Marisol Metcalf, Morgan Metcalf and seven grandchildren, Aiden, Michael, Sarah, Lindsay, James, Henry and Anna. The city of Los Angeles lost one of its most gracious and caring citizens and a true mensch and a hell of a nice guy. Michael will be greatly missed and his hard work on behalf of the community will never be forgotten. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, and God bless the family. I'm continuing to look to my right side. I don't see any other adjourning motions. Members, this meeting is adjourned.
For U.S. Customs and Border Protection, every day is nine eleven. As a Port Director for U.S. Customs and Border Protection, my number one role is preventing implements of terror and terrorists from entering the United States while facilitating legitimate trade and travel. I'm responsible for Los Angeles Seaport, Long Beach Seaport and also Port Huaynimi. U.S. Customs and Border Protection is the first line of defense. We are responsible for enforcing over hundreds of laws for forty different agencies, such as the Drug Enforcement Agency, Consumer Product Safety Commission and U.S. Department of Agriculture. A hundred percent of all arriving cargo is screened with our automated targeting systems. I have an anti-terrorism unit and an agriculture team that boards each vessel. They examine not only the cargo but also the crew. Non-intrusive inspection technology allows officers to look inside a container without having to expose themselves to high-risk shipments. We use the centralized exam stations, and that's 220,000 square feet for the Anti-Terrorism Contraband Enforcement Team warehouse, for officers to conduct more intensive examinations. U.S. Customs and Border Protection processes over 3,500 vessels annually and over a million passengers and crews annually. I wake up every day understanding that my role here in the Los Angeles Long Beach Seaport not only impacts national programs but also human beings such as my family. My family is very important to me. Me and my daughter both are movie fanatics, so we like to go to movies, we love to travel. Motivation is key. I'm passionate about what we do. It's a balancing act of economic prosperity for all of us but also national security so you and I and our families can sleep at night.
Greg Alper on the saxophone. And the Honor Orchestra Screen Section.
When I first heard the trumpet, like on YouTube, it sounded really good. True to Saxmo because it sounded like great, it sounded a little jazzy.
They had to practice four or five times a week, twenty minutes to thirty minutes a day. They became totally different boys. They were, Clifford and Louis were more calm. They were able to be focused, concentrate. I mean, it saw big difference in them. And academically, their grades went up. Socially, they're more confident. They're not afraid of public speaking. They do recitals for 500 people at the church and, you know, they don't have a problem going on stage.
You.